This is the CSSU's Board of School Directors' regular meeting for May 19th, 2015. Calling meeting to order. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Do we have an executive session?
I don't believe we do.
Planned?
No. No need for an executive session.
Okay. Anything off the consent agenda? Anything else? And there was a revision two to the agenda, so if you don't have that version, add a couple topics here or there. Okay. Audience and communications?
I have a communication. This is our last carousel meeting of the year, and I would like to acknowledge Tom Lang. Is Tom in the room, or did he just step out? So I'm gonna do it again when he's here. He's our student tech assistant, and I want to say thank you on behalf of all of us for the work that he's supported this year.
Circle back.
Yeah, thank you.
No presentations tonight, so boy, we're going right through this agenda now.
I know, we've got a full hour.
Don't worry. We'll find somebody to slow down.
There are brands.
All right. Reports to the board. Colt report.
The one thing that I would like to highlight, and I'm hoping that Colleen might say a little bit about it, is last, not last week, but the week before, Molly hosted the Mentor Colloquium. So that is gathering mentors and the mentees for an end-of-the-year reflection on the work that they've done, sharing it with people from other schools. First of all, kudos to Molly for that work. It's really, it's a really, really nice event. And Colleen was there, and I know that it meant a lot to the teachers to have a board member there, so I'm wondering if you might just share a few reflections, Colleen?
Sure. I mean, I've wanted to go on the past, and it hasn't worked out just because of the time of day sometime, but I was so glad I was able to attend because there were the mentors, the new teachers or new to teaching or new to the district with their mentors. And there was at least one, if not more, mentors who had frequently, had recently retired. And so that was kind of nice, having that cycle back. But the conversation, what Molly did is she grouped us at tables of eight to 10, and then mentees shared their stories, and mentors shared the experience for them. And it was really inspiring to see this high-level conversation about education and what it meant to each of them in the different roles. And it's very impressive, the program that we have here. So I know it will continue because there's good foundation there because it's, I guess, run by faculty within our SU. And so I'm just, you know, kudos. I agree with what Elaine said.
To that last point, Colleen, it's cultivating teacher leadership. There is Peter Booth from the high school and--
Deb Kilkelly from Shelburne.
From Shelburne, who are the teacher leaders of this program and work with Molly. So it's another way that we can develop leadership within the teacher ranks.
It's a great project. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the Colt report? Okay. I've got two. Special education consolidation update. I'm just gonna, Megan, kind of preface this. So when we started talking about the consolidation and started talking about the differences between all of our districts, there was an interest on the board, a lot of questions about, well, how are we, how are we going to make sure that best practices go across all the districts? And then, of course, this came up during the budget session when we started looking at some numbers of how things are executed, or terrible word, but how things are executed across the districts maybe differently, and what's our path for making sure that as we go forward, there are no inequities, that everything is right for kids in the best way possible while still allowing some flexibility between the districts? So understanding this was not going to be a, this is not something we could send Megan back to on Thursday, December 6th, and asking her to come back to the next budget meeting. You know, I think, I think we've sort of agreed that it works to have maybe a discussion in the spring about the process, about how we're making things equitable, both for kids and for faculty and for budgets and for taxpayers, but all those things come into play. Have that discussion in the spring so that it doesn't get distracted with the budget. But that's sort of the, they are connected. We're just trying to separate them so they don't, so we don't run out of time on either one of them, I guess. So that, understanding this is kind of early, we're gonna just ask Megan to bring something to us tonight.
Sure. I was gonna do it over here, but just realized that can open everything. So that was a great range. And what I'm gonna talk to you about is sort of the interface between maintaining equity across our system consistent with best practices in a way that's equitable for students, but also equitable from a cost standpoint. And then how those connect with the facts of our law requires us to make individualized decisions for students in order to meet their needs because that's what we're obligated to do. So what I'm gonna do is show you some things that you've seen before. Actually, I think at some level, you've seen every one of these documents, but try to put it in the context of how we approach decision-making around special education in order to make sure that we are equitable. So we're gonna look at comparative data that you saw earlier in the fall. We're gonna talk about guiding principles for intervention, which is our, those are our best practices that you've seen a few times. But you'll see how that interfaces with comparative data. And then we will talk a little bit about the individual nature and the regulatory aspect of special education. And then we'll talk about the additional work that's going on right now and has been going on for a number of years, all leading toward this idea of equity. Feel free to stop me and ask questions. I, there's not very many slides here. So the first piece is the comparative data. Let me just pull it up. You have this in your charts. It's much too small to read up here, I realize. This is a document that you've seen during budget season for the past number of years. What we did, though, is highlight, so these things in red. This is 504 EST currently placed students. And then again, some 504 coordination. Those numbers are relevant to our system of supports for all students, but they are not factored into the special education budget. So I think it's important to pull those out of there. Because we like to think of this as our tiered system of supports, we don't pull them out when we think of what we do for kids. But these things don't impact the special education budget. Those are local decisions around those pieces. But what we do in our system is we look at how we compare on all of these different categories. So the number of students that we actually serve, the number of students we serve in tri-bleek, how much leadership, special ed leadership we have in our buildings, number of teachers, speech-language pathologists, paraprofessionals, related service providers down here. And then at the end is a series of ratios that we look at pretty in-depth around. And this is sort of forms the basis of comparing our systems within each other. The goal is that we are in alignment with our guiding principles, which I'll show you in a second, but that we're also equitable when compared to each other. So the two pieces that I've highlighted for you before is that we look at special education density. And that's the ratio of special education professional staff to the total number of students in a system. And the research suggests that that ratio, if we keep that ratio between 1 in 50 and 1 in 80, then we are best able to meet the needs of all students in the system and adjust to the sort of typical fluctuations that happen. So we really look at that range. And as you can see, by and large, and these numbers have come into some alignment in the past few years. They looked different if we were to look at this a few years ago. But we are, by and large, CDU is just over that range, but pretty close to that range. And the other two pieces that we look at is how many special education paraprofessionals we have to IEP students, which is this range. And how many special ed professional staff do we have compared to IEP identified students? So this ratio and this ratio are both about professionals, but they're comparing to different numbers of students. And so our work revolves around digging into those numbers, how they link to the models that are going on in our system, and having conversations about keeping them in line with each other, but also how are they related to the decisions that are happening about students in schools?
Megan?
Yes?
I was busy looking at the numbers and maybe not listening as carefully as I should have been. So can you just repeat what the ideal ratios are?
Yep.
Or knowing that there are contextual differences?
Yes. The ratio that there is the most amount of research about is this special ed density. And we look for that to be between 1 in 50 and 1 in 80. The other two numbers, there is not a lot of research around what's the right number for support staff and for, particularly for support staff. And when we talk about additional current work, we're gonna talk about new information, not new, actually, but information about our system that speaks to typical paraprofessional numbers across the nation, across the state. But we know the most about that special ed density number.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna go back. So when we look at all of those numbers, what are the things that we're looking at right now that are most salient? So we know from looking at that data for the past number of years that a key focus in order to maintain equity of service is the function and number of paraprofessionals in our system. And I say function and number because equity is also about best services for students. And we are having lots of conversations about bringing the most expert people in our system to support our most struggling learners. And so that makes us look at these numbers, not just about how many we have, but do we have the right kind of services available for kids? Another focus is that special ed density number. Those ranges that I just talked about looked different three or four years ago. We have a number of systems that are slowly moving to reducing unlicensed support staff in our system and adding special education staff, which increases our special ed density. And we also talk about maximizing the instructional time of our most qualified educators through our multi-tiered system of supports. And you'll see these themes resonating in a couple of different areas that we're currently working with. So that's how we use comparative data and what we're focusing on related to it right now. The other piece, and I won't spend a lot of time on this because you've seen this before and I think it happened. But these are our guiding principles for intervention. So this is what lots of research in lots of different educational arenas agree, sort of coalesce around works for kids who are struggling. And the work of the tiered instruction leadership team, we have a, that's tilt. We have an M-tilt, a math, sort of a math version of that team. They have really dug into these principles, and they are starting to form the foundation of how we make decisions. This is how we make sure that your model in a school can look different, provided it aligns with this. So that's the other element. I'm happy to answer questions about this piece, but I think you've seen this a few different times. And those are the guiding principles. So the last piece that I just want to remind you of, this is a slide that was in the fall, common topic about just special education law, is that we do as a system have an obligation to look at our structures, our service delivery models. How do we do this for all students? But an individual IEP team is the team that ultimately makes the decision about a set of services for a student. And we're required by law to do that. So that team is a parent, the special educator, the classroom teacher, and the LEA representative. So CSSU is the LEA. We delegate that authority to our building-based special ed director. They, that director is bringing the lens of the comparative data. They're bringing the lens of guiding principles. So all of that is present when they make decisions, but they're still making individualized decisions. And they do that by looking at how the student's currently performing, what their goals are, and then what are the set of services that will provide a free, appropriate public education, which is the legal term that we're obligated to provide. And so I just want to make sure that we don't divorce the systems conversation from this individual conversation because we can't, as a system, say, this is how we provide services for this type of student. We can, we do call the research and talk about what works, and that is what helps us make our decisions, but we still have to make individual decisions.
Megan, just sort of clarification on that. The LEA here, the local education agency, is considered the SU central office, right?
It's me in special education, yes.
Versus the locals.
Correct. So what is the work that's been going on and has been going on for a number of years that's informing our conversations about special ed decision-making? Two of the primary, or the work around this is our MTSS work, and that's our tiered instruction leadership teams. That's been going on for the past four years, actually, long before the past four years, but this particular structure, that long. You will hear at the retreat information about the District Management Council report that was done this year. That certainly informs our conversations. You'll remember last year hearing about a school psychological services audit that we did that just looks at their function in our system. Just the act of consolidating our special education budget prompts us to look at that comparative data in a way that we haven't always done. And the other piece that, I actually meant to make that a link, and I didn't. So we'll make sure we get you the link. But the Agency of Education, actually, the legislature convened a study of paraprofessional use across Vermont. And the, what's included in that report is very much in alignment with the work that we've done about that issue. But that informs what we're doing and informs what is happening at a state level as well. So I'll make sure I get the link to that piece. And that's, I mean, that, I realize is a very big-picture look, but that really is the way to address that issue of how do we let our systems have variability specific to their context, but in a way that is consistent with best practices and is equitable, both service-wise and financially? Questions?
So Megan, do you think there'll be, I mean, like, well, it's also on the comparative ones, but you know I always go through the numbers, right?
Yep.
There was a couple of schools that were close to like 1 in 50, and there were a couple that were close to 1 in 70. And it could be telecoincidence, or it could be inequitable. So how, particularly, in that particular area, you're gonna work on?
I think where we're looking at right now is those numbers and the number of support staff together. Because if you have a district whose ratio is, say, 1 to 55, which is on the low end of that ratio, but they have a very low paraprofessional density, so sort of an inverse relationship, I would say that that system's probably in a good place. Where we're looking at is we have some systems that are on the low end of the density. So they're in the 1 in 50-ish range. And they have a highest density of paras. So essentially, they have a high level of professional staff and a high level of support staff. We want to look at that. Not sort of try to draw causal explanations for it, but that's the, that's how, that's my first look at it. And then, when we've sort of addressed that issue, then it might be zeroing in again on, you know, between 50 and 80 is a big, is a big span. And I think we do come back to that. But I think first, we want to look at the, how that number compares to our support staff.
Excellent. Yeah.
Would it fluctuate depending on your population and the need of the learners?
That's a good question. The goal with using density is that it allows your population to fluctuate, and you can still handle it. We still have some small schools who still might have to react if we had a big fluctuation. So it's not completely separated, but it's, using that number is meant to soften it.
Right.
Can you just clarify? So, and I'm thinking too of the article that I just read in the observer, which I think you're referencing a little bit here. So when you talk about the ratio in a paraprofessional, are paraprofessionals, in your definition, the licensed providers? Or could they be those helpers, assistants?
The paraprofessionals would be the unlicensed providers.
So across the board, when someone says paraprofessional in a comparison, is it the unlicensed provider?
Yes.
Okay. And so the goal is to try to perhaps see what that number is and maybe with fewer unlicensed people replace with licensed professionals to give a better quality service?
That's one way to look at it. It's about making sure the most expert people are working with the most struggling students. There is a very important role for paraprofessionals in our system. But is, are, do we right now have paraprofessionals providing the bulk of service that might be better provided by a licensed professional? And so that might mean a shift in services in services in that direction. But it's also about clarifying the role of a support staff. There are really important things that they do, and they're actually listed in our, in our guiding principles. And I know you can't read this, but I would read it to you. So they provide supplemental reinforcement of skills, that professional designs. They do a lot of data collection. They provide assistance who need personal care support. They facilitate sort of social-emotional peer interaction, more the behavioral end of things. So there are very important things that they do, but it's about making sure we have, we're using them in the right, for the right purpose, and that as a system, our ratio makes sense.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much, Megan. 5.3, third quarter FMR.
It is in your back. I'll answer any questions you might have. It's just changed modestly since the last quarter update, and you're continuing to be forecasted to lean in a favorable position at your end.
Some questions? Okay. What we've all been waiting for. 5.4 legislative update.
Before we start that? Yes. Might I take this moment to acknowledge that Tom Lang has been with us this entire year, supporting us at these meetings, and we very much appreciate your support.
Thank you for having me.
Tom's an active student development council. Thank you, Tom. Very much appreciated.
And he hasn't laughed out loud at us more than once or twice.
He's very discreet.
Very discreet.
I'm hoping he's taking what he's learning here and applying it when he's in the student council meeting and kind of gives him a different lens on how the whole thing works.
Okay, so-- legislative update.
So the big thing that happened in the legislature this year, it might have been like lots of other things, but in terms of our world, the big thing that happened was H 361. And that is the education governance bill that passed in the last week of the session. The goals, do you want me to run through this and just kind of give an overview, or do you want to just go right into the discussion? The goals of it are equity of quality and of opportunities, making sure that our governance model matches the structures that we have, matches the likelihood of getting to substantial equity and quality and opportunities for students, that it leads us to having students who meet or exceed the educational quality standards, that it will maximize operational efficiencies and give us greater flexibility, and that it will promote transparency and accountability, and, last but not least, will be a good value for our taxpayers. So those are the goals. They make a point of stating very specifically, this is not about closing schools. Nothing in this is meant to lead anyone to think that they want to close any schools of any size. They believe that actually, this legislation will help keep schools open because in a larger structure group, there are opportunities to figure out how to make it work better, more flexibility. The preferred education structure, so they talk about two education structures. The preferred education structure is a pre-K 12 school district. And that is defined in different ways because of the way, for years, we've evolved in Vermont. So it could be that it's operate a pre-K 8, and then you tuition 912. It could be operate pre-K 6, and you tuition 712. It could be that you tuition, as in the case of St. George, pre-K 12. That can all be part of it. For us, obviously, it would be operate a pre-K 12. Minimum numbers of 900 students. But that is, that's the preferred governance structure. The alternative structure is a supervisory union. And that is intended if the preferred structure is not possible. So particularly if, I, actually, only if you can show that the, you have, the SU board, for example, would have full responsibility for all the pre-K 12 students within the SU, that the SU, in fact, maximizes efficiencies, economies of scale, and flexibility. So how can you do that better as an SU than you can as an SD? And I don't get this part, but maybe you do, Bob. Has the smallest number of member school districts practicable? So you can be an SU if you have the smallest number of school districts practicable.
My belief is someone, the state, will look at the number of resulting boards, and if--
It doesn't make sense.
If it makes sense for three boards at a pre-K 6 level to consolidate and leave an outlier at 7, 8, that will be, fit into that guideline. But the sense is where there should be two districts consolidating, they should be.
Right.
That's the way I read the law.
Yeah, it's really clear that the preferred structure is a single board. They provide tax incentives for people who do this by getting a positive electoral vote after June 30th, 2015, meaning this coming June, and before July 1, 2016. And after that positive vote, you're operational before July 1, 2017. And the enhanced incentives for those people who do that is over a five-year course, 10 cents off your tax rate, 8 cents off your tax rate, 6 cents, 4 cents, and 2 cents. So for the first five years, you have that subsidy. There's a piece here around small schools grants, but where none of our schools are considered small schools, so we don't get that. considered small schools, so we don't get that. There is a transition, transitional facilitation grant. We've used some of that money in the study that we did before. So we probably, I bet we would not be eligible for that money, but we might be eligible for the $150,000 transitional. So the money that you need to spend in order to get from one place to another. Keith?
I know it's early.
Yeah.
But what does it mean for us? Do we need to change anything?
Well, I think this is the committee that you've got. So let me get through this because I think some of it gets to a little bit what it means for us. So for school districts that are created after the deadline, so after that, you know, the one year that we'd be looking at right now if we wanted to get the 10. There are still some incentives, but it starts instead of 10 cents, it starts at eight, six, four and two, and four years instead of five. There is a provision for evaluation by the State Board of Education to look at all of the remaining structures once the, that timeline has elapsed, and that the State Board can propose to create, expand or continue a supervisory union with member districts if, if it's the best means of meeting the goals that I stated at the front end of this. So it's all about like, you know, whereas when we did the RED study, one of the things we bumped up against is how can we prove that it would be more effective? They've turned that on its head and said, no, you've got to prove that what you're doing is more effective. So there would be self-evaluation meetings and proposals. So self-evaluation, if you don't choose to consolidate, you will be required to go through a self-evaluation process to go, to take each one of those goals and expound on how it is that you're meeting them. You would need to meet with all the school boards, obviously, within our, our own organizational structure, and develop a plan that shows how we're going to improve our current status in terms of the goals. And we would have to submit a proposal to the State Board of Ed that would say, the reason we're proposing, to stay the way we are, the reason we're proposing our current governance structure is because, whatever, and demonstrating how we're meeting those goals. The final plan, after July 1, 2019, the Secretary of Education would need to develop a proposal that would say, here's, you know, who, who we think are doing this the way they ought to be doing it, here's who's not doing it, here is the recommendation and the proposed alternative structures designed to, and you see this all over this bill, to move the state towards sustainable models of education governance that meet the Section 2 goals and that continue to protect choice of district to pay tuition, operate schools or both. Quality assurance and data accountability, so there is a piece there around the collecting data to make sure that people are moving towards the goals. And, let me see here, so if you were doing, in current statute, if you close a school or you turn a school into something else, or you sell a school, you need to repay the state for the percentage of state aid that you had. That keeps many people from not selling a school, for instance, or privatizing. If you consolidate by 2017, that is for a short window of time off the books. So for the early adopters, there are lots of little things in here to encourage you to do it now and not wait. Not that we would be in a situation where we'd be looking at closing schools anyways, but, small schools grants does not apply to us.
Dave, will you sell Shelburne?
Do I want to sell Shelburne?
Yeah.
I think that's all about that.
The transition costs also go away, elapse after 2017. So again, there's kind of some energy around getting people to, uh, doing this. There is a piece around here about clarifying who it is might be allowed to consider as SUs even if they weren't able to demonstrate that they are meeting the goals in a better way. And that would be people who either have a lengthy driving times or inhospitable routes. And so there are some places in Vermont, Vermont's very rural, there are some places where it wouldn't, it doesn't make sense. Or the other part is, again, driving home the piece about you have to demonstrate improved academic excellence and operational efficiency. So those are the only two ways to.
Anything else key in there? We've run out of time too.
Okay, so the other key there is 3.5% hold harmless, and that piece is around, no, no, actually, that isn't, that is declining enrollments. The other piece that is important is the piece around, there is a segment that talks about if you do not implement the statutes that have been passed, I don't think this is us either, but, you know, back in the day when a school district went like, I don't care that they passed that statute, we don't need to do that, we're not going to do it. Well, now there will be a tax penalty. They're going to add to your tax rate. And as an SU, if one or another of our family members decided that they were not going to implement a particular thing, that particular family member, Williston, let's say, would get an added tax. So they really, I think that there was a lot of conversation, Joan, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the legislature this year, they were pretty startled to find out that there were people who just go, no, I don't really want to do special ed consolidation. I really don't want the SU to do curriculum and professional development. I don't really want to do this. And they, so now like there's an accountability measure based in this. Back to your question, I think that it's, it needs a big conversation. And remember last year at the retreat, we recommended that there be a committee that would look at, we call it the strategy committee, but be poised to delve into governance if the legislature passed anything. So here we are. This is.
So I think what we're going to end up doing is discussing it in depth at the retreat. I mean, this has just come out. I just read it yesterday. It's, you probably all have a VSBA and it's a pretty good summary. We haven't actually got the official VSBA, you know, summary of it, so, so we'll have to clearly spend a little time at, at the retreat. Our strategy committee did meet and one of the things we decided was, well, this has got to clearly need more voices at the table than just one person from each board. In fact, we probably need community members and all sorts of things, so we'll need to put a bigger structure together to discuss this. The thing that frankly, I'm a little not entirely clear on is do we have a choice? It certainly sounds like there's a lot of wiggle room if we chose not to consolidate, but it's not really clear to me if that's true or not. So that's sort of a big question in my mind. You know, we, we are efficient, we are delivering high results. If that is true, that there are people that could get out of it, that could be something we could consider. On the other hand, could we be more efficient as a, as a single school district?
Possibly.
So that's, I think, left to discuss as a bigger group. Oh, Colleen?
And, you know, this is on the retreat agenda, right?
Yes.
So it would be really helpful if all board members did two things. One, look at the language of the bill and from the VSBA, there's a link to it, and particularly go to the sections of, you know, what's, what are the penalties if you don't do it? Because I do grieve, just a quick, but grieve is if you can come up with a good rationalization, it'll, that's going to be difficult. The other piece of homework that I think we should all do is look at statute and the requirements of a supervisory union. And that was a big part of our discussion in the committee, and if you start looking at that in detail, and Bob Mason helped facilitate our thinking about, you know, we think we've consolidated already, but there's, we can take things to another step. And so I think the challenge is, is what the State Board of Ed is going to do when they read the statute and we give our report about what we're already doing and is there a gap? And, you know, how is that interpreted? So I think if, as board members going into our retreat, I think our discussion could be very productive if we've read both the language of the bill specifically and looked at Title 16 and the statute relating to the duties of the board. And we could probably send that, right?
Yep. Eric, I'm sorry, Eric has.
Version of the bill, did that lock in the statewide tax rate?
Yes.
None?
Ninety-nine.
So where does the money come from if, say, we were to get the 10, eight, six, four?
Everybody else.
From the education fund.
But where's the education fund get its money?
Fifteen different sources, the largest one being property tax.
Right, so what if everybody decided they wanted to take the 10% lower property tax? Do you have to raise property taxes to get?
Well, it would be next year, I think, right? This ninety-nine cents is for this upcoming school year, this, I think this is the year after the 10 cents.
It is, but I thought.
If everyone in the state consolidated and everyone claimed those benefits, then yes, the tax rate would have to go up to give those checks back to everybody. If five districts consolidate and grab early adopter benefits per the law, the cost to write those checks is shared by everybody in the state.
At least for the first year, right? Then if the second year, everybody adopted.
Well, Eric, the rate was not set forever. I think we might be confused, there's, they've changed the, they've changed the formula to, I can't remember the term for it, they have, but they're talking about what, what a dollar will fund and how, if you're above that number, how your tax rate's going to, so all that's got to be changed.
Right.
But it certainly will fluctuate. It's not, it's not a set number.
Okay, so it'll fluctuate, it'll be a function if.
Right.
A lot of people take the benefit, then you got to raise taxes everybody else.
Right.
But if they wise up the second year, then everybody gets socialized with, then it becomes a zero-sum game, right? If everybody joined up the second year.
Potentially.
I think the likelihood of everybody joining up the second year is very remote.
So to be a first.
It is.
Would be.
Advantageous.
They just to taxpayers.
Yeah, but, and to be a first adopter, that means a whole lot of work needs to happen really fast because it's as of.
You need to vote on it.
But that's a big incentive.
Voting next year.
Right. There are some people in the pipeline right now. I mean, there will be some early adopters, including some right here in Chittenden County. There are people who are planning to move forward with this because they see, you know, I think if you imagine that eventually you're going to get there, there is definitely a benefit to saying, why are we waiting, right? That's the piece.
Dave, you have it?
Did I, I don't know, I didn't hear Elaine mention anything about those 5.53 spending caps.
Oh, spending caps, no. I didn't get to the spending caps.
That's in there too, isn't it?
The variable spending cap, which they talked about it being a sliding scale based on how much you spent in the prior year, but I didn't see in the documentation.
Yes.
Any numbers to tell us if we would be running.
So now it's based on how far you are from the lax and then.
Uh, it's based on how much money you spent last year per equalized pupil, and you will also on the ballot have to say, here's how much money we're looking for, and this is what it is per equalized pupil, and this is an increase or decrease over last year of this amount, this percentage amount. And then based on, if you spent more money per pupil last year, you can spend up to 5.5% this year without a penalty, and if you spent much less, or if you spent more than they.
Going up to two, right? It's been doing five and a half and two, is that?
I thought it was zero.
Five, zero, five and a half.
Yeah, okay, determinize, from zero to 5.5, depending on how much the district spent in the prior year.
Yeah, and they have like this big table of your district and what you can spend next year.
I didn't find that, so.
Yeah, that's in the Vermont Digger article. There's a link to that.
There's also some real significant constitution questions as to whether this passes muster under Brigham.
Oh, there's formula here?
Yep.
Really?
I wonder about capacity issues at the state, too.
So there's a piece here around, there's a, let me see what it is, the adequacy piece. So that probably addresses, doesn't address, but it acknowledges that they're thinking about that. So there is a requirement to look at what an adequacy model looks like. What is it that every school district needs to get in order to do many things, including meet the Brigham requirements?
So we are now way behind, I told you we would be. I mean, I told you, I told you I could do that.
Yes, yeah.
It's a great discussion, Dan.
I helped too, didn't I?
I suspect it's going to take a lot of time at the retreat. We just need to structure it so that we can be productive, but really take a look at the VSBA document that comes out with the Vermont Digger thing too, because that's clearly going to be a big focus for us coming up in the budget season. Thank you, Elaine. Joan, you guys want to throw anything in? I do have to, like, you've sat through the whole thing. Is anything you'd like to throw in for us?
I think it covers all the pieces from, from a higher umbrella look. It was better than we had started out with. It's not everything by any means. It's trying to balance those very rural districts and then Chittenden County. There was a lot of satisfaction between members of the, the two ed committees, Senate and House, and, and I would say a, a very comfortable and pleasantly surprised level among the rest of us who supported the vote on it. The details will, will get worked out. I worry about how much we ask not only the Agency of Education, but, but all the districts to do. But if we're not looking at it, I mean, we are at, I think, a real crossroads of how we deliver education, what we expect from special ed, from curriculum, and so I, it can be an exciting time. It's, it's, it's not stressless by any means, but I, I think there's some good pieces to it.
I wonder who's going to do all the work.
That's what I said.
I mean, there's so much work implicated for the Agency of Ed and for supervisory unions, school districts.
Well, we appreciate the thoughtfulness that both House and Senate put into it. That was maybe not entirely what we wanted, but it's, I understand that they spent a lot of time and energy trying to do the right thing. We're onto discussion matters, 6.1, policy discussion. Cindy, you want to?
Um, materials are in a packet. Do you have any questions you need answered before you have your local discussion?
I think this, is the action or is it the next group for discussion?
Uh, this is the group for discussion.
So I noticed there was a change with regards to, I think, curriculum.
Mm-hmm.
That changed, and I vaguely recall the debate about this a few years ago, about the role of the school boards providing approval for curriculum changes.
Mm-hmm.
And that has been completely eliminated. So I was, was hoping that the administrators could provide an explanation as to the reasoning correction.
Well, first of all, this is the recommendation of the policy committee, not the administration. Second, only the SU board coordinates curriculum, so that would be a misnomer to think the individual boards actually approve curriculum anymore. The conversation of the, of the committee was revolved around looking at the VSBA model policy and taking what we thought were the best parts of ours and the actual practice, particularly around the annual evaluation of the program and tying that more to our board retreat goal-setting process. But other than that, if other policy committee members want to chime in.
If I remember, the conversation was around, we're board members, we're not educators, so we put that into the role of people who are the educators. That's the way we had the conversation in the all committee.
We're still talking about even after you get off.
Yeah.
In the, you know, curriculum, it's a responsibility of the SU board, so, you know, and a concern of local boards a number of years ago, going way back, was if there was an adoption of a program, for example, did the local boards have some kind of say? So I think the prior version of our policy on this was trying to take that into account, and we felt that it was covered in other ways through the budget process and the annual work plan, that particular concern. Does that ring a bell? Lorna?
I think you did, you summarized it.
Anything else on policy?
Certainly, Josh, obviously that input can be given to your, your record.
Okay, that leads to 6.2, retreat planning. Are you going to strike everything or you just do that?
I have some notes if you want me to go through it.
Sure.
But you've done it.
I didn't, this is just, I just, what I have is from the last retreat.
From last year.
From last year, and that, you know, we, we tasked ourselves with several things. This year, we will have a sort of a refresher. We talked about governance and succession planning and data management and technology integration. There was a whole slew of things that we will definitely come back around to, probably to say, this is what we've done in the last year, is it, is it working? Should we change paths? Should we do something? So, so we'll definitely touch on those as committee readouts or, or, or status. At least that will be at least part of, of what we talked about.
So we were just thinking that we would do similar to last year, the gallery walk of important topics, and the ones we've identified for that are collective bargaining, tech integration, data management, MTSS and communications. Get a little bit roles in the things you're talking about, but that's how we would do that. Remember, we had the poster session, we had big posters, and then you walked around, could read it in small groups and give input, and then we kind of came back and wrapped that up.
I'm sorry, Elaine, could you repeat that list again for the gallery walk?
Collective bargaining.
Okay.
Tech integration, data management, MTSS and communications. We'll spend 45 to 60 minutes, I think, on the DMC audit.
Right, remember, that was the study that we bought into with, turned out to be one, only one other one that mostly focused around special education issues, but touched on general ed as well.
So we'll, we'll roll that out for you. Committee reports, succession planning and strategies, and then goal-setting, planning. So what are, what are we looking to do next year? And H.361, and I made some notes from, based on the input that I just got tonight.
And the other one that we didn't really, didn't really touch on is, and I could definitely use some input in the next, you know, couple of weeks on this, but around the outcomes and indicators. I mean, outcomes, actually, to Josh's point about, about what the board should be doing is really managing by outcomes, and that's why we've had this initiative, a multi-year initiative, to say, these are the outcomes the board wants to see, and then administration working, these are the indicators that are going to tell the board if they're meeting their outcomes. And that really should be the level that the board is operating at. We're sort of in the middle of that process. My reflection, and correct me if I'm wrong, but my reflection is that as, as you do a multi-year project like this, board members leave, board members come, and we sort of have lost the emphasis around why we're even wasting our time on outcomes and indicators. And so, given that we have an awful lot to cover on the retreat, I'm still struggling with Elaine on how we're going to touch on that.
I'm just making that same note.
But, but really, I think, you know, it, this is, this was our SU's response, rather than doing, what's it called?
Policy governance.
Policy governance, which was a big thing that a couple of boards worked on, which was to get, make sure the board really understood its role and it was executing that way. And we said, well, we're not going to do that, but we really are going to look at really understanding that the board owns and understands outcomes and owns and understands the indicators that tell us if we're getting there. And we just need to sort of refresh that in everyone's mind so that we can remember why it's important, so.
If I could toggle just for a second, just to plant a seed around the locals retreats, because that's on your agendas locally for tonight. And we have a plan, you know, it's the reg, there's the year-end review that includes action planning and the AYP plans where we are, review of the current cycle. So this year's cycle was student support services. How did it go? The presentations that were given at your board, local board meetings, did you feel smarter at the end of that? Do you feel you understand? This is, would be a good time to get that feedback. This is, would be a good time to get that feedback. And the technology integration recommendations at each school. So for tonight, the question would be, is there anything going on in your own district that ought to be added? Right? And that could be different in Charlotte, in Shelburne, in Williston. That's the input that we need for tonight. Next year, I believe that we're on the academic rigor cycle. So we will flesh that out a little bit for you for the retreat.
I think we may be on the strategy cycle next year.
Right, and we could do that.
Yeah.
We need to think about what that would look like if we were to do that.
I mean, we could think about what a report would look like, and once you think about the different sections of a report, that's going to drive our agenda.
Anyway, so that's all I wanted to say about that. It's really for input around items specific to your own local board. Okay? Jean?
Yes.
So I had in my notes from prior meetings, and I don't see this taking a lot of time, and maybe it fits in, but an update on Sback implementation, insurance overview.
Sback implementation can be one of those.
And special ed, the Act one fifty-three, one fifty-six, the resources, you know, whatever the status is in the current SU.
That's what we just did.
And that's what we just did, so I don't think we need to hit that again.
And I think we touched on the insurance one, Bob.
At our meeting.
It may not be a thing for everybody to talk about, but we can definitely make sure it gets addressed. It may not need to have a full-body discussion on.
Yeah. Minnie?
Yeah. Thanks, Paul. Anything else anybody was expecting to do with the retreat?
I think we should change it to a lethal.
It'd be really efficient.
We should be sequestered like they do.
Okay, and if you have any thoughts, don't hesitate to let me know. Six dot three, substitute pay rates.
In your packet, as you can hold the administration to, for two pieces, three pieces. One would be to convert our current sub-rate to an hourly rate. Second would be to, starting with the FY two thousand seventeen budget process, include sub-rate pays as a part of the assumption process. And finally, to increase our current rates for subs starting next school year. In your packet, there's some data about where other school districts are. Our recommendation is to go to the equivalent of ninety dollars a day starting next year. And we are currently at eighty dollars a day, and we've been there since two thousand and eight at least. And it's for discussion with action at the June meeting, requested.
So is any information that's not here that people would like to see before the June meeting or at the June meeting? Sorry, Josh, go ahead.
Yeah. Have there been any budget projections, what this increase would do based upon current usage in our respective school districts? It hasn't, though?
I can work on that. I know several of your boards increased their budgets for the first time in several years in this area, plus the SU now has a line for all the special ed pieces, but I can get that data for the next meeting.
Especially in light of the budgetary caps we're all going to be facing next budget season.
I think, anecdotal, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Joan.
In the packet, I saw that substitutes who even want to work here are starting to not because of the price differential. So that concerns me because something is not an easy task, and I think we're an attractive district, but I.
The amount of time our staff spends trying to find people willing to work for our district right now is way too much, in my opinion.
There's certainly a value to having highly qualified staff to have subs. Go ahead.
I was going to say that, too. I think that if we increase, we're more likely to possibly even get licensed people who are, you know, taking some time off, as opposed to someone who's just doing a study hall.
Getting back from college, going to watch a movie.
A lot of those end up being study halls.
Yep. Dave?
I guess I had a twenty-five thousand dollar increase in my sub-budget this year, and my first question was, why do I need so many subs? Has, like, what are the, I guess, is it professional development that people are leaving for? Or is it something else? Like, is it an environment where I don't want to come to work, so I'm going to call in today? And the other thing is, is if it's so hard to get subs, I don't hear stories about classes going unattended. Where's the, and I know Patty Spagnolo works super hard trying to find subs, but is there a problem where classes aren't getting covered?
We pull people in the building from their regular duties, and those duties don't happen.
So perhaps this might be a good question to ask your building principals when you're at your board meetings tonight, to see if they see it as a problem or not. I mean, there's no reason that we have to do this across the SU. It's just more convenient, right?
Yes, it is set by the SU board.
We don't want people saying, well, I don't want to work at Shelburne. I get more money at Williston, so.
It's the same reason we don't recommend a number of days you get to increase your rate, because Melinda would spend all her time trying to count how many days somebody has subbed, because nobody else would know with six different employers.
Right. Any other questions for tonight on this?
It's not on your local agenda, since it's not a local decision, so you'd have to do it under your CSSU D.
Did Joan hear that?
Yes.
Okay. Seven dot, oh, Action Matters, seven point one. Can I have a motion to adopt the CSSU twenty fifteen sixteen student and professional development calendar? So moved. Any discussion on this? Other questions? I go on the record saying I don't think we have a very good snow day buffer. If you have one snow day or two, if you have two snow days, we're going to waive it again. But it's, I know we're stuck between a rock and a hard place as long as we have full days for professional development. Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Your eyes have it. Seven dot two, can I have a motion to approve the support staff, ratify the support staff contract? Second. Okay, Kathy got the second. I'll give Eric the, so moved. No, wasn't it? Oh, okay, Mark. This is worthy of comment. Somebody on the committee like to comment on this?
I just want to thank Cindy for being an excellent facilitator of our process. I thought it was a very positive, thoughtful, deliberative discussion every time that we met, and I think when we finished, we all felt like we gave a little, we moved the SU forward a little bit.
I feel the same, but I think my first thought when you asked for feedback was to thank Cindy, because she put in an enormous amount of work and was very skillful, I think, in answering questions in a respectful way and gathering information and presenting it to all of us in a way that was, it was really a pleasure to be on that committee. So I feel good about the outcome. I think it's good.
I agree with all that. Jitoo.
What she said.
Yeah, no, Cindy, thank you, and it was, it wasn't an easy negotiation, never is, but it was a respectful negotiation, which is not always possible, and well-informed, which is appreciated.
And a thank you to Scott Cameron as well. He was very helpful. But they, good team there.
Well, sounds very positive, so, okay, Josh, go ahead.
And also my sense of appreciation for all those who did the hard work.
Yes, all eyes on the committee.
And the butt doesn't go to the negotiators. The butt goes to what the legislature just passed and the kind of pressure now we're under, because presumably, these paras are well-deserving of a three point five percent wage increase this coming year, and then the three point five in the following year. But I can tell you that the town of Williston is going to be facing a two point three six percent cap on its budget before we get penalized coming into the next budget season. And when seventy-five to eighty-five percent of our budgets go to wages for our staff, and we're looking at those increases at at least almost a point above our caps, we're going to be placed in a, in a no-win situation, and something's going to have to give, and I don't know what it is right now, that we are being put under a rock and a hard place by giving wage increases, deserving most likely, to these folks and to our other faculty, but being stuck with weight with budget increases on per pupil basis, substantially below that.
Just for some context, though, I understand your concern. For this group of employees, for the entire supervisory union, a half a percent is thirty thousand dollars. So that's not going to be a full percent. I just want to put a little context on that. For the teachers, absolutely, you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars when we're talking percent, but for this group.
But percentages are percentages. If three is more than two, it doesn't matter.
But not when you're taking budget change amount versus prior year to next year's proposed, thirty thousand is not going to bring you up a percent. That's all I'm trying to say.
And something else that we should point out, and I think this was a great success for all of us, is Article thirty-nine for the wages. With the four years, the first year is a three and a half percent increase. The second year, it's point six five per hour. Third year, it's a percent increase. Fourth year, it's a point seven oh per hour. Now, what that does, this is something that we've wanted to implement for a long time, is not just to have percent increases, because it makes the gap between the lowest paid and the highest paid continuously increase, and we were able to come to agreement that we would do an every-other-year piece of, you know, per hour increase and then a percent increase. And that's significant, and, you know, I understand what you're saying, we're all going to be under pressure, but I think that's a, you know, SU-wide issue on a whole bunch of different things.
It doesn't sugar out to three and a half percent for each year of the four years.
But we're under pressure for the first two by the legislature.
The first and the third. The second will be moderated by that fixed rate.
And just a reminder, across the SU, it's, that's not the impact.
Okay, so we're ready to vote? All in favor of ratifying support staff contracts, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Thank you, Eric. Eyes have it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Cindy, and thank you very much, the committee that put all the time into it for us in our. Are people okay if we do all the personnel in one motion, or is, do we do them separately? Can I have a motion to approve the seven dot three, one, two, three, four, five, and six as presented in the period information?
So moved.
Thank you, Lorna. Thank you, Joan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Eyes have it. Can I have a motion to award the twenty fifteen, oh, are we ready for this one, Bob?
Yep.
It was in the packet, I saw it. We have a motion to award the twenty fifteen bus purchases as presented. Need a motion?
Can you explain which one?
We can discuss it in a minute.
I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to. You can make a motion without actually agreeing with it.
Right, okay. I need a second, so we can discuss it.
Seconds.
Thank you. Go ahead, Kathy.
What, which is the bus proposal that you recommend?
The bus proposal for contract award went out in material after your board packet went out, because we didn't have the bids in in time to get it out firsthand. But the recommendation is that you award bus purchases for the two thousand fifteen year to Anderson Bluebird Bus Sales, one of three firms that provided quotes. Total of seven were asked to provide bids.
Was that the lowest?
Yes.
It is, it is the lowest bid in case of two buses, and in case of one of the buses, it's within four hundred dollars. But they quoted delivery far closer to the start of school than the other bidders. So we recommend for that additional four hundred dollars, we get the buses here when we need them.
Any other questions? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anybody sell buses for a living that needs to? Eyes have it. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Kristen.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Confirm next meeting date. We'll see you all on June first for the retreat and June twenty-third for the business meeting. And with that, I'm going to let Elaine introduce our speaker, but we did start a little bit late, so I want to jump right into it.
Hi. So I am thrilled to introduce Art Sinocia, who is a community member, a Chittenden South community member. His children went to Williston schools and CDU High School. I've learned some things about you, Art. So here's something I've always known about Art from the day I met him. He is a friend of public education. In my tenure as superintendent of Chittenden South, I've learned that Art is a friend of Chittenden South. I mean, he is a busy guy. He does, he works it all across the country, helping people understand special ed law, education law, and we get to have him with us almost every year, and we're so grateful for that. One of the things I didn't know about you, Art, was that you were the assistant attorney general assigned to the DOE.
In the last century.
In the last century. Many of us have last-century credentials. We're thrilled to have you here. Thank you so much. We really are grateful and appreciative of your time.
Thanks. Want me to stand here, or?
Wherever it's comfortable for you.
Well, thank you for embodying me. I prefer to say thank you as a parent of two sons in the Williston system and the CDU system. They're both gainfully employed. Thank you. Thank you, CSSU, and also my wife was on the Williston Board when Allen Brook was being built, so that was a while ago. So we feel committed to CSSU and thank you for all of your hard work. I was asked today to, first of all, an attorney who's given like forty-five minutes to speak, so that's, that's a challenge right there. But I know that Cindy and Elaine asked me to address some of the hot issues, some of the legal trends. I will do my best. I thought that we would, first of all, cover one of your legal responsibilities, and every school board, including school staff and so forth, have to be, have to receive training on confidentiality of education records. So let me take a few minutes and fulfill that responsibility for the CSSU board. We have a law, federal law called FERPA, the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act. You may have heard of the Buckley Amendment, the same thing. It basically says that student education records must be kept confidential, and I just wanted to briefly review this from a board perspective, and I'd be happy to answer or entertain any questions or comments. An education record is any matter maintained by the school or an agent working with the school that contains what's called personally identifiable information, the student's name, the parent's name. In some of our small schools, if we said the fifth grader in a wheelchair, in other words, it's personal characteristics that would make the student's identity easily traceable, those are all, would be considered an education record. There's a misunderstanding generally that an education record is what's ever kept in the cumulative file. That's not true. Records in the cumulative file are education records, but records, I'm a former teacher that I maintain and I share with others, counseling records that where the counselor may share with others, the principal's office, health office, et cetera. There could be all sorts of locations where records are kept. The major exception being, I keep a record as a teacher or counselor, and I don't disclose it to anyone else. That's not an education record. Now, basically, the law says this, I, as a parent, have a right to access education records. By the way, I wanted to, I should go back and just, it includes emails. So an email that is sent, that is intended to be private, that is sent maybe by me as a board member to my principal or to another board member, that may contain information regarding a student, the parent of a student, et cetera, that would be an education record. So be careful, what you intended to be personal communication could indeed be deemed an education record, which means that I, as a parent, have access to that, or I could authorize someone on behalf to have access to that. Or I could authorize someone on behalf to have access to that. School officials with a legitimate educational interest have access to education records without parental consent, and at times that includes school board members. I wanted to highlight that for in a health or safety emergency, but school board members. When do school board members typically have access to education records? Well, we don't like to hear this very often, but disciplinary hearings where only a school board is empowered under Vermont law to impose a long-term disciplinary suspension. You may be apprised at times of litigation involving students. You may be apprised during executive session of some issues that are bubbling in your school. At times, I know when my wife was a school board member, she, as a brand-new member, she got to sign all the invoices on behalf of the board. And at times, there was personally identifiable information. Bottom line, as a school board member, you're acting as a school board member under two different scenarios. One, at the duly convened board meeting, or secondly, when the board empowers or delegates you to carry out board business. If I walk into the school as a board member, but my children attend the school and I'm walking in and speaking to the principal or the teacher, I'm not acting as a board member. So I don't have unbridled access to information. Bottom line, when you're carrying out your responsibilities as a board member and should you have, be privy to educational records, you are legally required to maintain that confidentiality. And I know that we have had situations in Vermont over the years. As Elaine mentioned, I was an assistant A G with the Vermont Department of Education back in the eighties, was in the private law practice in Vermont. I could tell you stories, most oftentimes in very small towns where word got out through a board member at the general store, things didn't go well. So, bottom line, I wanted you to be aware that as a board member, you're going to be privy at times to education records of students. And not only ethically, but legally, you are to maintain the confidentiality of those records and only share it with other board members or school officials when there's a legitimate need to know. That's about the quickest training I've ever done on confidentiality. I'd be happy to respond to any questions or clarifications.
Yeah, Art, we do discipline hearings. We usually don't, well, who decides what's appropriate? If I want to say, well, I want to see all of their grades, you know? Who would decide whether or not that's appropriate for...
Well, in a, in a hearing, and again, we're talking about a long-term, proposed long-term removal, only a school board. I would suggest that the school board would need to consider voting to go into executive session to conduct that hearing.
We always do, yeah.
I, as the parent of that student, have a right to share information, bring witnesses with me. There might be a psychological evaluation that I want the board to be aware of, or the school has education records, including a history of disciplinary records or a history of efforts a school has undertaken to attempt to address behavior without getting into discipline. It would be up both to the administration and the parents to bring that to the attention of the board in executive session. But the board cannot take legal action in executive session other than the purchase of real estate options. And we are not talking about the purchase of a real estate option. So oftentimes, what, when I was working with boards, we would get the agreement of the parents to come out of executive session and use, like John Doe or Jane Doe, and there would be an agreement so that the information would remain confidential and not be subject to the local newspaper, et cetera.
But my question is more around, who decides what's relevant for the board to know?
Ultimately, ultimately, the administration would be proposing the disciplinary action. The parents, if they challenged that, would have a right to share information they feel is relevant. But ultimately, it would be the board members to determine the weight and the relevancy to give that information.
But I could say, I want to see their psychological records, even though they're in trouble for, I don't know, skipping class. Is there, is that just sort of something you have to work out?
I think if, in a given case, if a situation comes up and I'm the parent and I say, well, you know, my child has been identified as having...
Well, that I can understand if the parent says it. I'm just, if the parent isn't offering it and the administration isn't offering it because the school asks, the school board say, I want to see it.
If you feel it's relevant to that making your decision, yes. But there's a fine line between inquiring about what you believe might be relevant information, you won't know if it's that relevant until you see it, and going down a fishing expedition.
Right, exactly.
And so I would dissuade the board from saying, well, we want to see everything that the school has about this student. And so there is that fine line of relevancy. And again, you're going to have to depend somewhat on the administration to quote, present the case to support their proposed disciplinary action.
Great.
And wouldn't the final say be with the parents? As far as what records?
No. Not in a, not in a, in the context of a disciplinary hearing. It would, it would be, I, as a parent, would be able to share information that I feel is relevant regarding my child's behavior and why I feel my child should not receive that punishment that's being proposed. But the board, but the school administration would have the right to share education records that they feel is relevant to the actions they're proposing. And I, as a parent, would not have veto power over the board considering that. Again, the board must keep that confidential, and you don't go home and say, boy, did you hear a, do I have a story to tell you about, I used to talk about the Cleavers and then people reminded me that we're not in the sixties anymore. So I've talked about the Simpsons. So again, even in small communities, I don't want to be so naive that rumors get out there, but let them not come from board members or staff members of the school.
Thank you.
The administration also asked me to talk about liability. That's a light note for your digesting your dinner. Liability, first of all, based on negligence. And that's a very common form of liability, where I have to show that the school has a duty of care for my student, that there's, that school breached that duty of care, and that as a result, or the proximate cause, injury occurred. Well, we had a case years ago out of the Blue Mountain School, where a child was running down the stairway and bumped into someone else during lunch. She was supposed to be sitting in the classroom, kind of timeout, bumped into someone coming up the stairs, knocked them over, and they got hurt. Parents sued. So the question is, what is the duty of supervision during lunch period when that student was supposed to be sitting in the classroom contemplating their behavior? Well, as a result, our legislature at the time then enacted a law that defines the duty of care. Each school district and its employees owe students an ordinary duty of care to prevent students from being exposed to unreasonable risk from which it is foreseeable that injury is likely to occur. Who wrote that? Had to be some attorneys. On the other hand, the legislature clarified, schools don't owe students a duty of supervision at all times and under all circumstances. So that the legislature declared, you have a duty of ordinary care, but you can't be in there in every corner of the school at every moment of the day or every corner of the school property. So what I, I could do a whole lesson kind of on this that I did in class, as some of you who took my class, but I'm going to, I'm going to just make it very brief. And probably, the chief case in Vermont is called Epsom versus the Berry School District. And it's a very sad case, but I picked this out because it did go to the Vermont Supreme Court. And here was a child who came to school with a note from her mom to excuse her to be able to go to the doctor during the day. So she went to the doctor. The assistant principal saw someone in the school looking for her, and that someone in the school was not a student. And so the assistant principal inquired from this young man, can I ask what you're doing here? And he was looking for this student. He was asked to leave the school, he didn't belong there. The student came, came back from the doctor's appointment, and the assistant principal saw the student and said, now, you go in and check in with the counselor's office, let them know you're checked, that was the protocol back in Spalding at the time. Go check in with the counselor's office, let them know you're back in school. She said, I need to grab something from my locker. So she went to the locker, and her friend says, somebody wants to see you outside. So she, without permission, walked out the school door, saw this young man who had been in school earlier and said, a friend of yours wants to see you, let's take a ride. So, I mean, what's really sad is that she was taken to this house, she was sexually assaulted, and she was murdered. The parent sued the school for lack of proper supervision. And so, you know, this is not a light topic, but the court clarified that schools in Vermont owe a duty of ordinary care and that what a reasonably prudent person would do under the circumstances. And in this case, there was no reason for the school to foresee the risk that this young woman was being exposed to. And the court made a note here that I think is worth mentioning, that says, Spalding's duty of supervision is limited in scope to the extent necessary to carry out its educational mandate as a public school, elevating the duty of care to ensure that students with known truancy issues, drug abuse issues, this young woman had some drug issues and substance abuse issues, or other behavioral problems. So elevating the duty of care to ensure that students with truancy, drug problems, other behavioral problems, remain on campus would not only be financially and logistically burdensome, but would likely detract from the school's primary purpose by diverting significant resources from education to security. This is not an excuse to say, you know, well, you know, kids will be kids. But the court recognized that schools cannot be there following every student at all times. The Supreme Court held that there was no liability for lack of proper supervision, that the school fulfilled its duty of care. Similarly, there was a case recently out of Arizona where a young woman, I believe a fifth grader, was riding home from school on her bike, crossing a busy road, and she got hit by a car. They sued the school for her injuries. Here, the court said, again, you have a duty of care, but it's, it has limits, and that a school does not have a duty of care to a student traveling to and from school when the student is not in the school's custody or participating in a school activity. The court noted, had there been a crossing guard assigned by the school at that, at that particular intersection, we may have viewed this differently, because the school then has taken on what? A role of supervision there. But this young woman was traveling by herself, on her bicycle, no duty of care, and again, the school was, withheld not liable. Most cases of liability these days, though, are not negligence, but constitutional issues. And I wanted to share with you a case that came down within the last year from the Addison Rutland Supervisory Union, which is down in Benson, actually, it happened in the Benson School District. Where a parent with a, he had a hearing loss, so he would speak loudly. Sometimes he'd pound his, his hand on the table, would visit his child's classroom virtually every day. There was about five hundred pieces of paper exchanged between the parent and his request for information. The staff and the principal felt threatened because he would sometimes raise his hand in a fist, sometimes pound the table. His son was a special needs student and was undergoing an evaluation and talking to a psychologist and said, I'm going to get an axe and kill the teacher. Well, the psychologist felt, maybe, where is he getting this from? Maybe, so she reported that to the school. This was an off-campus psychologist. The superintendent contacted the local police who said, you are authorized to issue a trespass order, or no trespass order. So the superintendent issued a no trespass order, saying, Dad, you cannot come on school premises, not just the school, school buildings, school property for the next two, count them, two years. His wife went to the school board meeting and voiced concern because he was an active participant apparently at school board meetings, and they offered him the opportunity to participate through telephonically, which he rejected. Ultimately, he sued the Addison Rutland Supervisory Union. And this case came out about five months ago from the federal court here in Vermont, the federal district court. And the court held that the school violated his constitutional rights under the First Amendment and Fourteenth Amendment, that his right of free expression was violated when he was prohibited from coming to school board meetings because school board meetings took place on school premises. The no trespass order presumably was there for the protection of staff during the day when he, but the scope of the order was such that he was prohibited from attending school board meetings. And the court said the telephonic option didn't work because it's not the same as being there and engaging in a discussion. And I'm making this fairly short. This is like a thirty-page decision. And also, his rights under the Fourteenth Amendment to the Constitution were violated because when the trespass orders were not issued under any protocol, he was not given any, any right to challenge or contest the particular no trespass orders. So the court ordered the parties then to brief the relief. They hired a mediator. The school paid a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in damages. And again, we're not talking injury here, we're talking constitutional rights. And I see this as a much more common issue these days than someone tripping on the curb or on the ice in the parking lot. That happens also. But, but in terms of the cases that are generating a lot of the legal attention, it's the constitutional free speech and other constitutional rights. So since this is from Vermont, I thought it would be, it would merit discussion. The, the school board, or the supervisory union board, said, we didn't issue the no pass, the no trespass order. Our superintendent did. So they got into a discussion, they got into a discussion of who the final policymaker is. And they said, in Vermont, it's the school board. However, the school board members testified that they were aware that the no trespass order was, was issued by the superintendent, and they did not feel empowered or authorized to overturn that. So the court deferred and said, in this case, based on these circumstances, that they de facto, the board, de facto delegated the policy responsibilities to the superintendent. So it was the supervisory union that was held liable for violating the free speech and due process rights. I know that would not happen in Chittenden South. But again, any comments or questions?
Did the police issue the order?
No, the superintendent did.
So there was, it was just a private...
The police were, the superintendent conferred with the police who said, you have a right to issue a no trespass order. You don't have to go to court. You just, you know, serve in writing this no trespass order. And by the way, it was for two years. How did the two years come up? It was on the pre-printed form. So in other words, again, for due process rights, the scope of the order exceeded what the, the court did say that the staff had a legitimate concern of protection, but that the no trespass order was so broad, it far exceeded what the superintendent felt that he was doing in order to protect his staff.
In a case like that, would the superintendent have the ability to go to the agent? In a case like that, would the superintendent have the ability to go to the agency of ed or get legal counsel to have that legal advice? I mean, I can see both sides, I can see the feeling of threat or even the awkwardness, and it's not always easy, but...
And if you read some of the behaviors, I mean, this was not terribly unreasonable, but first of all, as a, I cannot speak for the agency of education any longer, I have opinions on everything, however. When I was with the Department of Education, before it became an agency, I would be on the phone all the time with superintendents and principals and other administrators, but making it clear that we were not ethically allowed to provide legal advice because my client was the Department of Education, now the agency of education. And that's why ultimately, I would suggest in a given case that the administration have a conference with the agency of education, but if you want legal advice, you would have to seek that through the school's legal counsel.
So you didn't pause before you went to liability, so I hope I can go back to the duty of care. You gave two examples of off-site, you know, two situations that were off-site and one situation that was onsite, and...
Well, one was onsite.
Right, where the kid was running down the stairs and trips someone...
The very case from Spalding, the argument was that the student should not have been left unsupervised to be able to walk outside the door unauthorized.
Okay, sorry for that, but I just wonder, like, with, you know, how has the bar for supervision within the school changed in regard to relatively recent events and security of students and security of the perimeter of the school? And what sort of exposure does that put on boards, especially now with, I try not to read Newtown printings, but, you know, those things are starting to gain traction and move, like, what's our duty of care there?
Oh, for the days of spitballs and...
Yes, exactly, yeah.
But, you know, I think it would be sensible for every school to have an emergency plan, and I believe that every school in Vermont is required to have such a plan. It's still, it's not a guarantor of safety. You can't guarantee that my kids will get home safe on the school bus this evening, although you would hope so. In other words, I think that if you do have a plan and it's not carried out, I think, well, first of all, my first concern is for student safety and staff safety. And second, liability, but, I mean, we want to keep our school community safe. But if the board is, if the school had a plan to take certain actions in a given instance and they did not follow through on their own plan, I think that would add to the possibility, should people seek legal redress for any injuries, to show that the school did not follow its own plan and by doing so, they violated their duty of care. And that's why when we develop these plans, they've got to be thoughtful, they cannot, you cannot conceive of every possible event.
Just because we're continuing to talk about it, I just found it interesting, the second, the second example that you used, where they said that the person was not in, the little girl or the boy crossing, was not in school custody.
Right.
But the first girl was, arguably, like, she did come back to school and sign in, she was in school custody.
She was in school...
So it's, I suppose, too, it's a little bit regula of how duty of care will be interpreted.
And the court also said, among other things, it would be different if a six-year-old was left unattended than a 16-year-old. So that the age of the student, the characteristics of the student, in fact, it says, thus a school district might be held liable where a six-year-old child leaves school unattended, darts on the road and severely injured. So the court does look at that, under the circumstances, was it reasonable to provide that care? Knowing, and I've spoken at CBU and I've visited so many high schools, it's impossible, in Art's opinion, to be able to supervise every single student during every part of the day in a large high school. Now, I have seen situations where teachers have taken, not in Chittenden South, have taken calls to schedule the delivery of the washing machine, so left the classroom unattended, somebody picks up a pencil and flips it and hurts another student, first of all, the student got hurt. And we, but, a teacher's supposed to be there. And absent an emergency situation, a teacher needs to be in the classroom supervising his or her students. Those are the cases oftentimes where insurance carriers get involved and settle. I'm gonna move on. I was asked to address gender identity issues. Vermont's Public Accommodations Law prohibits discrimination in public accommodations, including schools, based on race, creed, color, national origin, marital status, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, and disability. A case that we should be aware of, from a neighboring state in Maine, there was a student who was born a male, but in third grade started dressing as a female, manifested behaviors as a female. She was allowed, she was referred to as she by the school community, based on the parent's request. She was allowed to use the girls' restroom. And things went fairly well, in fifth grade, she was now referred to as Susan, so she took on a female name. Word got out in the community, and one grandfather, who was a guardian of a student, said, what is going on in our school? Well, if Suzie could go to the girls' bathroom, you can too, was his grandson, and ordered his grandson to go into the girls' bathroom. And as you can imagine, that was not acceptable. The grandparent, in fact, contacted the media, and we all know, at times when the media gets involved, it becomes almost uncontrollable. The school pondered about what they should do and then suggested to Susan that she would use the faculty bathroom. She wanted to use the girls' bathroom, she was prohibited from using the girls' bathroom. Her parents pulled her out of school and filed a complaint with the Maine Human Rights Commission, very similar to Vermont has a human rights commission that would look at alleged discrimination. The Maine Human Rights Commission found merit to the parent's concern, filed a lawsuit, and the first level of lawsuit was in Superior Court, the court ruled in favor of the school. It gets to the Maine Supreme Court, the Maine Supreme Court ruled otherwise. The Maine Supreme Court said, many of the school officials involved in Susan's education exhibited tremendous sensitivity and insight, the record reveals her counselors and teachers strove to provide a supportive environment and were largely successful. As a result of its efforts, the school came under intense public scrutiny, which caused it to reconsider the propriety of steps it had taken up to that point, and ultimately to reverse course. Ultimately, the Supreme Court in Maine said that the later decision to ban Susan from the girls' bathroom, based not on a determination that there had been some change in Susan's status, but other complaints about the school's well-considered decision constituted discrimination based on gender identity. We don't suggest that any person could demand any access to any school facility or program based on self-declaration of gender identity or confusion without the plans developed in cooperation with the school. But in this case, there was no question that the student did identify as a female, took on and manifested behaviors, and the school accepted this. This case was just settled for $75,000. This is probably the lead case, especially in the area, and the questions I get are bathroom cases. And this case cited by, from the Maine, it's Maine, it's not Vermont, but if you look at the Maine law, it parallels Vermont law. So whether the Vermont courts would be persuaded by the Maine analysis, I don't, I can't say for certain, but since it's the Maine Supreme Court, it takes on kind of added weight, but it's not legally binding here. I was asked to talk about gender identity, I mean, again, there's all sorts of other issues, but this was a fairly recent case from Maine, very much patterned after Vermont, so I thought it was relevant for our discussion.
Just quickly and interestingly, in the legislature, and my committee deals with buildings and general services, so any state-owned building. And just two weeks ago, we had a couple students from Burn Burton come to us, they'd been to a conference in Chittenden County, and they proposed legislation for all state-owned buildings to have not just a family bathroom, but a gender-neutral, because they wanted it to be understood that, not trying to sneak or camouflage going into a different bathroom, but really identify it as gender-neutral, and we're seriously considering it. So one stall, one door lock.
And this, you know, again, I wanted to note, the court acknowledged that the school was supportive, the school, you know, was supportive of the student, but once it got out and the public reaction was not all supportive, the school reconsidered. And did offer the use of the faculty restroom, but that the court felt was discriminatory.
Are you protected in this case if, prior to any sort of situation like this, you create male, female, transgender bathrooms in that situation? Like, is that a protection mechanism?
I think there would have been a mitigating circumstance here, that wasn't the facts of this case.
Right, I know for this case, but is that a...
But I can't say for certain, because I can't cite any case where that's occurred. I know that, I was just in Colorado recently, and that there was a news piece about a school that was doing just that, to accommodate all of their students. And whether that would be, you know, in this case, the student was offered that neutral bathroom, but it was for faculty members only, so it singled the student out. Had it been a student restroom that would be available to any student, that could have been a mitigating factor. I want to talk about bullying. We, in the legal profession, have been really good, I think, when I work with school administrators and board members, we have categorized behaviors. We have bullying, we have harassment, we have hazing. I keep saying, there's also behavior that's just not acceptable, but we don't, and we don't have to drop it in a particular bucket. However, bullying, Vermont was one of the first states in the country to have a bullying statute, and you may recall in Chittenden County, there was a middle school student who took his life off-campus because he felt he had been bullied to such a degree that he couldn't stand it, and he took his life. The parent of that student still travels the country, the parent of that student, instead of going to the courtroom, went to the legislature. And we were one of the first states to get a law that prohibits bullying in school. I will tell you right now, the number of lawsuits filed around the country based on bullying, I was just in Montana three weeks, you name a state and I was just there, but Montana just passed a statute prohibiting bullying, they were the 50th state. So all 50 states now have state statutes. But it's one act or a combination of acts, not based on the student's sex or disability or race, but it's repeated over time and intended to ridicule, humiliate, or intimidate the student. It could be, it could occur on school premises or at a school function, or even off-school property, but there has to be a nexus, that means there has to be a clear substantial interference with that student's access to the educational program for a school to be responsible for off-campus behavior. But it is possible, and I will tell you now, the whole issue of the use of social media has exploded, the Supreme Court has been asked to take three cases where students have been bullied through electronic means, the courts have ruled differently, and the Supreme Court has so far not taken any of these cases on. What I wanted to talk about is that the U.S. Department of Education has issued two letters, one regarding students with disabilities who are in special education, to say that if the student who is being victimized by a bully or bullies is on an IEP, the IEP team must address what impact, if any, it's had on the student's receipt of learning opportunities, and if necessary, change the services of that student. In a similar vein, the Office for Civil Rights, OCR, for students who are on what's called a 504 plan, some of you may have heard about Section 504, that prohibits discrimination on the basis of disability. Same thing, if that student is being bullied, not because they have a disability, but they're being picked on. And the 504 team has to meet and determine what impact it's had on the student, if at all, and if necessary, change the services. I will tell you, this is, I was, in preparing for today, I was asked to talk about trends, this is a trend. I just did a Google search, since March 1st, there's been 64 lawsuits filed, not in Vermont, not against the SSU, but on bullying in students with disabilities. I guess the lesson learned for us is that complying with Vermont's law on bullying, complying with our school board policy on bullying, has been deemed legally not sufficient in order to protect students who are on IEPs or 504 plans. There's a very hot case right now, it's been in the courts five years, in front of the Second Circuit Court of Appeals, that's Vermont, New York, and Connecticut, where the parents of a student who was on an IEP, the court found that they were bullied, the school did not respond as was expected, the parents are suing for significant amounts of money, we'll see what happens there. They pulled their child out, and the public school has now been ordered to pay for private school tuition while all this is festering. But I guess the lesson learned is, looking at Vermont's law is not sufficient, looking at board policy is not sufficient if that student is a student with a disability. And I know my time is almost up, but I did want to, just two other points. Vermont Legal Aid, earlier this year, issued a report, unfair and unequal student discipline in Vermont schools. And I won't go through each of the findings, but the legal aid has highlighted what they perceive, and they also want to acknowledge that the agency of education has incomplete data. So the data that this report is based on is not the kind of data that anyone would desire would be a full, comprehensive picture. But it does show that kids are being suspended with increasing frequency. Kids with disabilities were three times more likely to be suspended than kids who are not disabled. Kids who are African-American or Native American were two to three times more likely to be suspended from school than the general student population. And also, the use of restraint and seclusion. I will, I will tell you, well, let me go to the next one real quickly, the Office for Civil Rights has just issued a report to suggest that the use of restraint and seclusion is used unduly with kids with disabilities. This has highlighted this, there are several lawsuits against schools around the country for the alleged improper use of restraint and seclusion. We in Vermont have a very detailed state rule on restraint and seclusion, and first of all, it's not to be used for discipline or for punitive purposes, it is not to, it has to be conducted by trained staff, and it's got to be, not for staff convenience, staff convenience, but when there's an imminent danger. And I won't go through all of the requirements of our law, other than the parents must be informed if there will be use of restraint or seclusion. The superintendent and agency of education, under some circumstances, have to receive reports. There's got to be documentation. And the board, through the administration, has to see that parents are annually notified of their rights under Vermont law on restraint and seclusion. This issue is not going away. The, you may have heard of the No Child Left Behind Act. No Child Left Behind is going to be left behind here shortly, because it really is the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of 1965. So the Congress is in the midst of reauthorizing the law, and Senator Sanders is on the Health Committee, Health, Education, Labor, and Pensions. They just voted in a 12-10 vote to amend the bill that's going to the full Senate to put additional responsibilities on states and school districts to limit the use of restraint and physical restraint and seclusion on children, in particularly the special ed population and children from minority populations. We'll see where this goes through the political process, whether we get through reauthorizing the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. But you won't be hearing No Child Left Behind anymore. The last major item I wanted to talk about is a document that was just issued by the U.S. Departments of Education and Department of Justice on effective communication. Effective communication for individuals with speech disabilities, hearing disabilities, vision disabilities, that schools, being public accommodations, that the ADA, the Americans with Disabilities Act, requires that schools, as public accommodations, provide communication to individuals with disabilities as effectively as they do with the general population. And that the law requires that the school give primary consideration to the request of the individual with a disability. Example, the most significant case so far has been a student with a hearing impairment from California, was on an IEP, had accommodations for their hearing impairment, but the family wanted real-time captioning provided. And I don't know if anybody has experienced real-time captioning for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. In some of the forums where I speak, you have, in essence, a court stenographer taking my comments verbatim, and if there's an individual, they come up real-time on your computer screen, or if there's a group, on a large screen. The first time I presented, I started talking and reading my words at the same time and kind of threw them off. The point I want to make with CSSU Board here, the Department of Justice and Department of Education has said, "We are taking this on very actively, and not just for students, but employees. Also, parent-teacher conferences, public performances, so that when, we want to be proud of our kids, and so when there's a community play or there's a public forum, that the effective communication requirements of the ADA will also apply." The courts, in essence, have said, "You might have complied with special ed law, you might have complied with another law called Section 504, but the ADA has specific effective communication responsibilities that public entities, such as schools, are required to adhere to." And I've seen in particular, schools being pretty sensitive when working with students, but what about the general community as a whole? And that if I am requesting, as a community member, a particular auxiliary aid or service in order to receive that communication, and the school is not going to provide it, the school has to justify in writing to me why they will not provide it, while it would cause an undue hardship to the school. And undue hardship is just not financial. You would look at the entire school district budget to determine undue hardship. So, I mean, this just came out fairly recently, and the Departments of Education and Justice have said, "This is going to the top of our list of priority areas that we are going to enforce."
They're going to give us money for that.
So that's about all that there is. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to say one thing, and that is, when Elaine told me that you were coming tonight, I got really excited.
Whoa, how many people get excited?
I know, I know. And she told me that you were a big skier and you spent a lot of time in Colorado. And I brought you something, and I hope that, in the spirit of left versus right and fiscal conservative versus education, that you would accept this gift from my employer, which I got for you, but, my employer had nothing to do with this. I got you a set of goggles and a T-shirt.
Oh, my God. Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming to do this presentation for us.
Thank you.
This is the magnetic face.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if you've seen it.
You know, Killington's still open.
Yeah?
Thank you very much, and I know I've kind of stayed over by a few minutes, but thank you for wanting me. Thank you so much for finding us.
You're welcome.
Very helpful. Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
And I'm glad to see that I don't read about CSSU in any of these cases.
Motion to adjourn? Second. Make you stand adjourned. Thank you everyone.